I'd like to call this regular council meeting the order. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence unless you remember all those who passed away during Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dillon, can you do roll call, please? Mr. Pezzet.
Here.
Ms. Collins. Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Cousins.
Here.
Ms. Figueroa.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Kachuchik.
Mr. DeJezzette.
Here.
We have members of SEPTA here tonight that they want to do a presentation. So if you go to the podium and state your name and who's going to do what.
My name's Jennifer Dockerty. I'm long-range, I'm manager of long-range planning at SEPTA and I'm here with my colleague, Ken Starr.
Hi. My name is Ken Starr. I'm the manager of joint real estate development for SEPTA.
I'm also here with-
You guys all look familiar.
I'm also here with Andrew and Derek from DVR PC. Jennifer, you want to get up and introduce yourself as well?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to be here, but you'll hear a presentation from Jennifer and myself.
Okay.
All right. I'm here to present on SEPTA's-
You know what, John, I'll go down there and say it.
Okay. On SEPTA's transit-oriented communities program. And then we're going to talk specifically about a study that we've done for Bristol Station specifically. So our transit-oriented communities program really recognizes how transit and transit-oriented communities have defined and shaped southeastern Pennsylvania. And that the Philadelphia area really grew up around transit. Now Bristol is special because you're so, such an old community and you have that history of that maritime history that kind of even predates the railroads. But we, SEPTA feels very fortunate that we not only inherited what the Pennsylvania Railroad built and what the Reading Railroad built, but we have inherited the settlement patterns that grew up around these train stations, around these trolley lines. And we have this, you know, exceptional history of rich neighborhoods, walkable downtowns, main streets, and lots of other places. When we talk to other transit agencies across the country that have transit-oriented communities or transit-oriented development programs, they're so jealous of us because they're having to start from scratch on really auto-centric and auto-oriented places. And they don't have places like Bristol where you already have this really walkable community that can support transit already. And so our program is really meant to work with our partners like Bristol Borough to further transit supportive land use, urban design and development that reinforces the major investments that SEPTA's making in our system, such as the improvements we're going to be making to Bristol Station to make it ADA compliant. So just to kind of reinforce this, you know, statement about our transit-oriented communities program is that it reflects and supports this rich history of communities built around transit. And 45% of the five-county population lives within a half-mile of our train and frequent SEPTA transit services, our buses and trolleys. That's almost 2 million people living on only 10% of the land. So when we talk about our transit-oriented communities program, we're really talking about reinforcing what already exists to enhance the existing community character and walkability. And another thing that we love to talk about is that 80% of folks who use SEPTA today walk or roll to our stations or stops. We have about 22,000 surface parking spaces. If we were reliant on those surface parking spaces for our ridership, you know, we wouldn't be getting anywhere. That is, you know, less ridership than we have on our Route 47 bus, for instance. So to recognize this, SEPTA created Transit-Oriented Community Guidelines that support partnerships and encourage growth around SEPTA. And this really helps us to respond to the role that we play in the economic development of our region. We often go out and when we're asking the state legislature for funds, we talk about how we bring value to real estate and how, you know, SEPTA drives the economy in southeastern Pennsylvania. And it also helps us respond to existing interest for SEPTA to participate in planning processes, to comment on proposed development, and to react to unsolicited interest in our properties, which we've had, folks come to us many times over the years and we've had no way to respond to it. So these guidelines provide clear goals and strategies. They have less transportation area and corridor typologies, and it also includes a strong implementation framework. I want to read this out to all of you, but our guidelines have three goals, which is foster people-first communities, increase mobility through seamless transit, walking and micro-mobility trips, so biking, scooters, and Bristol's so lucky with the trail system that you have here. And then the third goal is create economic opportunity by allowing more people to live and work near transit. So our document has a really strong implementation framework that really shows our commitment to transparent, equitable and community-driven implementation of our program. We have kind of a three-pronged implementation approach. One is partner and sponsor, which is talking about agency-owned land where SEPTA is a development partner and a landowner here in Bristol. We actually lease the Bristol Station from Amtrak, but we do all the maintenance, all the operations of it. We have coordinate and facilitate where we're more of a stakeholder. And this is having a conversation about our station areas, the corridors that we serve, and then plan and advocate, which is really how does SEPTA talk about this at the federal, state and local levels. So today, we're really here to talk about the partner and sponsor, and we want to talk about how we could potentially think about joint development on SEPTA's parking lots at Bristol Station. So we worked with DVR PC on a screening process for this to figure out what stations we were looking at as part of our pilot projects, and Bristol is one of our pilot projects. So we prioritize stations that have higher development potential, larger parcels, we have a nice square parcel there, a rectangular parcel, a lot of our parcels are weird triangle shapes, supportive plans and zoning, strong municipal partners and previous interest. And the stationary concepts create a case for transit-oriented communities development and appropriate zoning. They employ community involvement. However, the municipality decides that is appropriate, we take the municipality's lead on that. In Ambler, we did open house meeting there, and we're going to be having an open house in Germantown next Tuesday. We, once we kind of go through that process, it enables SEPTA's solicited proposals through competitive selection process. And then that all goes well, we select a joint development partner for a long-term land lease. We're not looking to sell the property, we're not looking for a one-time infusion of money. We're really looking for a development partner that kind of furthers the goals for SEPTA, but also the goals of the community that we're working with. And a long-term land lease gives SEPTA a stable source of income, but it also gives us more control in the community, more control over the type of development. This might be a little hard to read, but this is just kind of a proposed process, and this can be different for each community. So here, we're in this station concept developments who are reaching out and we're kind of refining what we have in terms of our stationary concept, which we'll present to you tonight. We are thinking what might be appropriate for Bristol is to release a request for information to get a better understanding of what the development community might think the level of interests are, who might be proposing. Then we would work with you all if that all goes well, and we think that's the right steps for us to take on the land entitlements process. And we're also simultaneously working on an agreement with Amtrak. If that all happens, and this is all ifs, we would move on to develop first solicitation and selection, then project refinement, and then permitting and construction. So we're the very first step of the very first stage. And I'll hand it over to Andrew to talk about the stationary concept itself.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. As Jen said, my name is Andrew Speckla. I work for the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. I'm here with my colleague Derek Lombardi. Thank you very much for making time on your agenda tonight. We know you have a lot of business to discuss. My job here tonight is to talk a little bit more about some of the preliminary ideas we have for the Bristol Station, but I just want to make sure that folks know who or what DVR PC is. You might be thinking right now, you know, what is DVR PC and why are they here? DVR PC, as we're better known, is the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Greater Philadelphia. That's a bi-state, nine-county region that you see on the map there, so that obviously includes Bucks County in Bristol. But it also includes 350 total municipalities across the two-state region. We're based in Philadelphia, but we try to plan across municipal and county boundaries on projects that have regional impact. And we certainly think that the way we think about our transit infrastructure is of regional importance. And so just very briefly, planners like Derek and myself help our planning partners like SEPTA, other transit providers, New Jersey Transit, Paco in New Jersey, as well as our counties. We have a very good working relationship with Bucks County and all of our other county planning commissions. And we sort of conduct a regional goal setting and planning. We maintain a long-range regional plan for the region known as connections, provide a variety of data and information, and then we do specific studies. And this is one of those studies that we've been working on. And just to reinforce some of the points that Jen was making, we really think that our region's transit infrastructure is essential to the way we've grown and developed over the centuries, and it makes us the envy of a lot of other regions around there. And I think if we can look over the last two decades, I think between 2000 and 2020, we've grown roughly 6.5% as a region. And as we look out forward to 2050, we're expecting to grow between 7% and 8%. And where those folks live, where those households settle will have a really big impact on the character and the future of the Delaware Valley and greater Philadelphia. And so we think one of the smartest ways to approach that growth is to manage it and try to appropriately place it in locations where there's existing infrastructure and things like transit, so that we can minimize traffic impacts and other things, and use the existing infrastructure which we already have built and have to maintain anyway. So with some of that as background, we're thinking big picture about the region's transit infrastructure, which is robust, but what we really care about tonight, obviously, is the Bristol Station. And there are four reasons I want to highlight our interest in Bristol. As Jen alluded to, Bristol Station was selected because not randomly, we weren't throwing darts at a map. We reviewed, you know, hundreds of stations, many of which are controlled by SEPTA, and Bristol was one of 17 that scored as, you know, high TOD potential, transit-oriented development potential. And they did that across a wide variety of economic, physical form factors, market characteristics, transit service quality, all of those things. And so that's one of the primary reasons that we're focusing on this station. We also saw some shared goals. Not only are SEPTA and DVR PC interested in this, I think we looked at, you know, county plans and looking back into 2006 township plan or borough plan, called out the fact that even back then, you know, this was a large and built-out community. Future growth would likely have to take the form of infill development, and one of the sites that's called out in that plan is the commuter parking lot at the train station. The station's site is well-sized, shaped and situated for development. We looked at hundreds of station areas, and SEPTA doesn't own a lot of land, but a lot of the land that they do own is oddly shaped, as you can imagine. You may have parked in some of these station parking lots yourself, but Bristol by comparison is flat, regularly shaped and relatively large. I think it's probably in the 80th or 85th percentile for size of stations that we looked at in terms of the parking area. This may be a good time to just get into some more specifics. When we're talking about the station itself, we're largely talking about the area within that dashed line, so bounded by Prospect to the south, Jefferson to the east, Garden and Beaver. And as we alluded to, a lot of that land is owned by Amtrak and leased and sort of operated by SEPTA. The bottom sort of southwest quadrant there is municipal property or assumed to be municipal property. That's the historic station building there outlined in green, currently operates as a daycare with some parking. And so you sort of see that large surface parking lot there, roughly 80,000 square feet, just about 1.8 acres. And part of it is that on any given day, it can oftentimes look like this. We've been out there several times, and I know the utilization of it might fluctuate a little bit, but we're talking roughly 300 spots. One of the last times we were out there, we were counting cars, you know, roughly 40 cars or so. So, you know, a fair amount of excess space to think about. So all of these things sort of align to get us thinking about what are smarter ways or ways to think about this property. And the timing, of course, is key to this as well. SEPTA will be making critical upgrades in the station in the near future. A little bit more about the existing conditions there. Right now, you may be familiar that there are sort of stairways on each side with a tunnel or an underpass that connects one side to the other. In the future, that is going to look like this in terms of access. The dark blue there are expanded high-level platforms, so that's a big improvement that SEPTA is implementing across the system. There'll be new entrances, sort of the longer stairways. These things in lighter blue indicate ramps and stairways that will make the station ADA accessible. So that is also a big improvement, and we're excited about that. There'll be additional bicycle parking or refurbished bicycle parking added. So as we think about these capital programs and improvements that are happening, we wanted to make sure that we're trying to coordinate planning. And so if there are some folks who are thinking about development potential at this site, how might that mesh with capital improvements at the site? And so as we think about planning concepts for this, to call out a couple of things, what you see on this map, the dark is sort of the implied longer high-level station platforms. In gray, I've sort of ghosted in those planned ADA access stairways and ramps, and of course the historic station building to remain, the tunnel to remain in terms of how you would access one side to the other. As we think about that parking area, currently Washington Street sort of deadends into the station itself. And so as we think about potentially incorporating that into a site to sort of see how that might help with the flow and circulation. And when I say concept, we're really talking, you know, at the very beginning here, very basic here, we're talking about a potential development envelope, that area shown in orange or yellow there, as just an area to think about. Area A there, sort of the leftover area that we think could right-size the parking need on this site, also handle shuttle services that currently serve the station as well as passenger drop-off. But if we think about that site or, you know, portion of this B, the conceptual development envelope, we might think about, are there mixed-use real estate development or perhaps multifamily development with shared parking? That could be for potential future residents or occupants of that building to be shared with commuters, if need be. Would that make sense on this site? So that is sort of one preliminary alternative. And as we think about, this area is served by SEPTA bus as well, it's about 129 operating on Beaver Street. And we still think a lot of those pedestrian accessways here, shown in green, would be reinforced, and we're constantly thinking about how people would arrive at the station safely and conveniently. As we look at this site closer, I think we sort of see that 100 Prospect Street, sometimes referred to as the Beaver Street property, as a natural site to consider including in this. So we call this sort of alternative two. It's a little bit of an expansion in concept in terms of thinking more broadly about this property. And if you could consider locating shuttle services and passenger drop-off into that existing surface parking lot, there is the historic station building here currently operating as a daycare that would, of course, remain. We were sort of asked to look at this and sort of see, is there a way that we can think about how this property might be incorporated while protecting most of the green space? There are several trees there, some open grass area. So how could we sort of maintain largely the character of that site while also thinking about how it could improve the overall look, feel and design? And I think importantly, think, improve the identity and sort of visibility of the station. Right now, it's sort of a little bit tucked away, not as visible to folks, and some folks might not even realize what a resource you have right here in your community. So in this alternative two, we're thinking about portions A, B and C. We want to take a little bit closer look at what that 100 Prospect Street might look like. Once we came up with that idea, we sort of wanted to see, well, what might the circulation and flow through that parking area actually look like? And this is one option. Of course, all of this is preliminary, but the idea is, you know, how could the inclusion of this space improve the design and operation of Bristol Station for all users, people who are already using it, or people who might want to use it in the future or use it once in a while to get to work or to an event? And so the elements we're considering are shuttle service and circulation. SEPTA will be operating a new SEPTA GO shuttle service that will be servicing this area. Passenger pickup and drop-off, making that as legible and convenient for folks. We know a lot of people arrive by, you know, getting dropped off by another driver. Current and future commercial use, maintaining that in the station building. Pedestrian access, station image and placemaking, as I mentioned. And part of that idea is, is there a way of thinking about activating or simply beautifying some of that open space in that prominent corner there to let people know that, you know, this train station, which is a big part of Bristol's legacy and heritage, is still here, it's open for business and it should be part of the borough's future as well. So we think that there's opportunities for enhanced station visibility, integration into the community, more direct connection between SEPTA rail riders who might be walking this way to connect to the SEPTA bus service, which runs along here, and dedicated space for passenger drop-off and shuttle service. So with that, we're happy to sort of take any questions. Like we alluded to, we're very much at the beginning of this. We want to hear from you about municipal priorities for Bristol Station, opportunities for public and stakeholder feedback. You know, this is one of our opportunities, and I see, you know, Councilperson Johnson and Figueroa, we've had the chance to talk with you in the past. We appreciate your vegan audience for us in the past and tonight. And then is there an appetite or opportunity to solicit information from the development community or other folks here in Bristol? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just, we had several meetings regarding this issue, regarding the renovation of the There's a lot of positive things happening. We talked about how the buses will pick people up and drive them around town, bring them back to the station. So it's a, it's a big overall plan that's going to be put into place eventually. As far as stairs, there's all handicap ramps being put in on Garden Street and on the parking lot side. So I don't know, it's something I think council really needs to think about. We need to know number of units, what the unit's going to look like. We said to you prior to today that we would definitely want, we don't want apartments. We're looking at density. But our major thing, and I like to get this on the record, we wanted this to be a firehouse. And SEPTA told us numerous times they're not selling the property. So I just, because a lot of people are saying, well, why don't the borough take and make it a firehouse or something for the borough? You don't want to sell it. I mean, we, we approached SEPTA numerous times. So am I correct? So-
Yeah. And to be fair, it's technically not our property to sell anyway, it belongs to Amtrak.
And we approached them too.
Yeah. As much as you can.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, we just, I want the borough residents to know-
Yes.
-in town that we did everything possible to try to acquire this, this piece of ground because we thought it would be a great location.
Yeah, I totally understand.
With the new firehouse in.
Can I, can I ask a couple of questions? The, when you say mixed use, are you referring to like commercial and residential, or are you referring to the, the type of layout? What are you referring to?
Yeah, mostly when I say that in this kind of context, that can take a lot of different forms. The most common one we might see is ground floor commercial, perhaps a restaurant or services. Oftentimes you might see a tri-cleaner with apartments above, or in other economic climates, you might see office space. That's not really something that's being built right now, but generally multiple units, uses to in the same building.
And this, this is primarily a public project, is that right? In the sense of, like, how will it be managed? Let's say you build it, how will it be managed when it's, when it's done? Are there HOA fees? How does that work?
So the, to be clear, SEPTA would not be, you know, building anything other than the ADA improvements. We would be, if we got to that step, we would be soliciting, yeah, an RFP for a development partner who would build it and manage it.
And would you be able to apply parameters to that?
In terms of the management?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, if, and I think something that we've discussed, or we've heard in the past, not just in Bristol, but I think there's a common concern is that if you're going to build some kind of, say, for rent units especially, you want to make sure that the management is going to be handled properly because you don't want that property to fall into disrepair. And I think it, well, first off, yeah, we will, in our agreement, we will have parameters related to the relationship with that developer and whomever is responsible for managing the property, just because it's within our best interest to, like, think. Also, it's in our best interest and everybody's best interest to identify the best possible development partners who have a track record of success and, you know, buildings that are successfully managed because we all want, we want that project to succeed.
And are there any current examples of communities that already exist that you might compare this potential project to that we could look at or go see or?
Well, I mean, this is a new program for SEPTA. The project that we have the farthest along, which was an RFP that was out and it's going to hopefully be awarded soon, is in Conshohocken for a piece of property we have there. That didn't go through the same TOC planning process that Bristol has been going through, but we have Ambler, which is going to be going out for RFP any day now. So we don't have examples of a built finished product, but we have other communities where we are doing this work. And it's not just Conshohocken and Ambler, it's throughout the entire operating region.
So from what I understand, what we talked about prior to tonight is SEPTA's trying to increase their ride share. So you're trying to take parking lots like Bristol and other areas that aren't being utilized the way they should be. And by putting these units in, people that may live in the city or live somewhere can jump on a train and they get to where they have to go. I mean, that's basically, I think, what we discussed last time we had a meeting. That's, you're trying to increase your ride share.
Yeah, that's certainly a part of that whole program is we want to see, we, it's, it's good for SEPTA to have people living, working and playing next to our transit. But it's also, we believe that it's also good for the community as well.
But at the end of the day, this is really, you know, the presentation's great, but again, if you have an underutilized piece of property that you're trying to maximize your revenue with the ground that you still develop where it's going to squeeze in as many units as possible. And the more units that are squeezed in, the better the return on the investment for SEPTA because that's going to determine your long-term lease to the development.
That is not our objective. Our objective is not to squeeze out as much money from the property as possible. Our objective is to create a community that is complementary to transit. When we receive proposals back, we are not looking for the max amount of units or the max amount of money we receive. We're looking for the development that most closely matches the community and SEPTA's vision for the site. So somebody came back here and said, we want to build 30 stories and they want them to all be studios. We'd say, no way. That's not appropriate. So this is not, this is, this is, this is, we're not a developer, we are civil servants.
Sure.
And so what we're looking for is really something that is appropriate, and we want to work together towards what we think is appropriate. We don't have the number of units, we don't have the square footage because we're not developers. We're coming to you as a partner and saying, do you think that looking at redevelopment of this property is appropriate or not? If you say no, we don't have to move forward because we want to, we serve your community. We want to continue to have a high-quality, positive relationship with you. And if it's not the right time, if this isn't the right use, then we can be patient. We're not going in here. Us rebuilding our properties is not going to fix SEPTA's budget and problems. It's a long-term solution to building an economic and ridership base for us, but it's not a silver bullet.
Who's the developer in the Conshohocken project?
We're announcing next-
Yeah, we have not typically selected.
But you'll, the developments that you're working on, you'll be announcing what the project is and who the developer is.
And, and I'll say, we received five responses and they were all five very reputable-
What's that, Jen?
They were all five very reputable firms that have a long track history in Philadelphia And what we were thinking with doing an RFI, if you were comfortable with that, was that we'd then be able to answer some of your questions about quality of developers and the type of development that could be attracted here. And if we received back, I don't know, we received back things that didn't match up what we thought was appropriate, we would have a much better idea of like, who's interested? Are they high quality? Do they have, do they have a good track record? Because we can't answer those questions yet. Cause we can't answer those questions yet because we're regional planning authority, we're a transit authority. We need that developer partner to kind of see what's out there as a market and what is the interest in Bristol. So we can't answer a lot of your questions.
Are you able to tell us the square footage of Concha Hockin of those units?
So the, in Concha Hockin, this is what I can say, and we just have to be careful about what we share publicly. Yeah, I, dealing with a group of people I know understand. So what we had discussed with the borough and what we included in the RFP was developments that were in the 250 to 300 unit range for that site. Now that's a six and a half acre site and we were going to need parking, there was like a parking component to it. It was a very, all of the, like any one of these projects are all unique in their own way and they have their own needs and challenges. And I think to Jen's point, and the work that we do within the TOC program, it's really about finding the best use and the most complimentary use for that specific site in that community. So, you know, there's some commonalities. I mean, stormwater is something we hear in every community we go into. We do hear about affordability in every community, but then, you know, things can start diverging pretty quickly. And, and that's, the program's meant to marry up, you know, the things that, that the community wants to see to the best of our ability and, and the things that help Septa in its mission to the best of its ability. And, and hopefully something in that Venn diagram that's marketable for a developer that makes the project, you know, interesting to them.
All right. I, I just think that we like to see what's going on in the other two sites. Cause I'm curious, you have a train going by at whatever speed, you got a residential home right there. And we got people living on the other side of Garden Street, but it's a lot closer. So it's, I'm curious to see what your other projects are, are going to look like.
And I would like, I would like to see it be owner occupy. I don't want to see, I'm sorry, but you know, I think that's the best way to go. We've been trying to develop a lot of stuff in Bristol and most of it, we'd like to do it as owner occupy.
Yeah, I think, so for our perspective, first off, because we don't own the property and even if we did own it, we're not. Part of this program, I think Jen alluded to is we're, first off, it's, it's kind of messy for us to sell any property just because of the way that we've come to inherit it or acquire it. But we're not interested, so we're not interested in selling property and we are, you know, this program is really about building these kind of, again, I say complementary uses, but if we're not going to be selling the property, you know, it's really going to have to be a for rent unit.
You want to be the landlord.
What's that?
You want to be a landlord.
We only are the landlord for the improvements, not for the, for the development itself. That's correct.
All right. Anybody have any more questions? Does anyone have anything else?
I just have, everyone else has pretty much said what I wanted to ask, but now there are signs for the parking lot. You have to pay. Is there any way that the signs can be made bigger?
Um, we are not responsible with the signs, but I'm happy to go back and talk to the sign folks and ask for that.
Please do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Could I just go back to Greg, to your point earlier, do we have something to point to? And I, obviously that's, that's a great question and something we'd love to be able to do. Septa's program hasn't evolved to the point where we could say, this is a product that's emerged from their TOC program. But I think it could be instructive to look at recent developments in and around Bucks County that might have marketed themselves as one of the amenities you get by living here is, you know, we're near a train station. So I, I'm happy to share a list of recently constructed multifamily properties just for informational purposes. So you can sort of see what the market is responding to in, you know, your housing market. A property that comes to mind is sort of Patriot Station at Chalfont. You know, these are properties built right up against the tracks essentially in economic conditions and land use contexts that aren't too dissimilar from here. And so there are others in Newtown and, you know, I've got a whole list of those that I, maybe I could share with James and could be distributed just for informational purposes.
Yes, that would be nice. Thank you guys. Thanks for coming in. Are you sure we can't get a firehouse there? Jen, Jen, we need a firehouse. I thought Septa would have donated a brand new firehouse to the borough. See you again.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Do we, anything with the pub? Good, Matt? Is it going up?
No, I wanted it not to make it so bright.
Can you put it up more? Oh, I'm sorry. No, he needs it. Okay, Kurt.
Good evening. Mr. Dillon had just asked, I give an update on a project that's about to go to construction. You may be familiar with it. We had gotten a grant for $250,000 through the DCED's Greenways Trails Recreation Program to construct some trail connections around the Public Works Building. And to add some parking spaces. So this is a copy of the, of the plan. I'll try to use this pointer here. This is the Maple Beach Road. So you have the Public Works Building fence shown on the bottom of the screen. To the left of that screen is the Aqua Water Filtration Plant. You can see that there's proposed sidewalk. The sidewalk will connect all the way down to the newly constructed reconstructed bridge. And then connections along Canal's End Road that'll connect into the parking lot. So this is just a little bit more zoomed out version of that. So we had solicited bids, we received those bids and recommended an award to G and B contractors who the borough has worked with in the past, and they've reached out and they're looking to set up a pre-construction meeting in the next few weeks. Project should get started then. I would say within a month, everything is in order. And it should be completed prior to August of this year. So once the weather warms up and the asphalt plants open up, they'll be able to finish that project.
Any questions on this project? Play the unit starter, Kurt. Do we have anybody in the public wants to speak on anything with public participation? That ends public participation. Before we get started, I would like to welcome Brendan Corrigan back tonight. He's calling in for Jeff. Brendan's from, born and raised in Bristol, which is an honor to have you.
Always.
Happy to be back. Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan. Okay, Mayor.
Um, I have a couple of things I'm going to get through quickly. So in keeping with the train discussion, myself, the borough manager, council president, Councilman Pezza and Councilwoman Cullen met with our sound wall acoustic engineer who's going to start the acoustic study for the sound wall in the Harriman area along Trenton Avenue. That's going to begin any day. And then we'll have some better direction on what type of wall we will need and the size of the wall and all the other parameters to see what kind of relief we can provide the residents in this area. So I just wanted to update the public that that's finally moving in the right direction. I also wanted to touch base with the residents of Bristol who are suffering from all these truck problems. I am recommending and I'm asking the borough manager and council to place a temporary concrete barrier at the intersection of Prospect and Beaver Street. We had another incident there where a truck came down Prospect Street and hit, unfortunately, a resident's car for the fifth time. And it's infuriating to me. It's ridiculous. We are, we are working diligently to get this fixed. So I'm also asking the Borough Council to pass an ordinance prohibiting truck traffic on Beaver, Jefferson and Pond Street, which will make this a non-truck route and trucks will be able to be cited and ticketed for coming down these streets. And hopefully also assist with the G, fixing the GPS issue we have. We are requesting a meeting with the owner of Utopia, which is the big building that used to be Keystone Lighting. The, the number one problem with these trucks that's happening 99% of the time is they are missing the turn into Utopia. And then they're wandering into all parts of Bristol Borough. We had a truck, an Amazon truck today that was about to turn on Jefferson off of Beaver. And we know what would have happened there. They either would have hit the bridge or got stuck under the bridge. I sent the chief of video just a week or so ago of another Amazon truck literally making a U-turn in the middle of Route 13 at Bath and Route 13 to go northbound. I mean, it is an insane problem. We are aware of it, but we are going to take every step possible to fix this issue. And until it's fixed, we're not going to be satisfied because it's completely ridiculous and out of control what's going on with these trucks. I, I may have mentioned this before, but I was woken up by a truck probably a year and a half, two years ago that was on my street trying to get on the other side of the train tracks, the lumbermen's. And a tractor trailer was trying to back down towards Jefferson at like 4:00 AM. So it's a problem we're having throughout town, but the problem we're having on Beaver Street and that whole area is more prevalent. And we are going to get it fixed. I want to let the public know that I had a meeting today with Chief Slack and Steve Reeves. We're progressing on the design of the proposed firehouse. I think we are very close to conceptually having our design, which I will present to council and then we'll move on to some elevation renderings and things of that nature to try and keep this moving forward. We will be meeting with Gilmore to try and place the firehouse on site to see how it fits and see how we can work some other things in and around the site, access and everything else. But we are moving forward and we're making some positive progress with the unified firehouse. I wanted to give a couple of shout outs. One is to the Mignone family who had their 10th anniversary of the American Heart Association Dinner honoring Ann Monday. Also a special shout out to Caesar's Restaurant who closes for the evening. Everything is completely free for this heart dinner. And they raised, I think, just about, you know, $10,000 for the American Heart Association, which is a cause that I am near and dear to. And this year for 2025, I am personally sitting on the executive leadership team again, which I did in 2019 for the Philadelphia Heart Walk. And I've committed to raising $75,000 for the American Heart Association. So you will probably be getting an email or a call from me for a donation. I also want to mention the fact that there was an awesome article in the Philadelphia Inquirer today about the redevelopment project down on Rackless Street, the townhouses and the condos. Just touched a little bit, not just only on the project, but the renaissance of Bristol Borough. And I want to give a shout out to BCS Builders over there, whom, along with myself and Chief Moore's, we were there for a $1,500 donation to the Fuel the Force program, which honors officers throughout various events throughout Bucks County. And I had a conversation with the lady that runs Fuel the Force, asking her if we could bring an event into the borough to honor our police officers for all they do. I also had the honor today of spending some time in Snyder Girardi Elementary Kindergarten for Read Across America. And if you ever had a pretty frank conversation with kindergarten kids, you will hear a lot of things because they haven't filtered. So if you want to hear what's going on in and around Bristol, just talk to the kids in kindergarten. They'll give you all the dirt. And then the last thing I want to mention is if we can all keep the Tosti family in our prayers. Former mayor Gary Tosti and county commissioner Bob Hart, his aunt, Pauline Tosti Mikowski, more commonly known as Tooki, passed away. So please keep all of them in your prayers throughout this difficult time. And that's all I have.
Thank you. There's one question I have.
Yeah.
Did you, I can't comment.
I want to keep it moving since we're almost an hour into the meeting.
You're asking, I guess, the borough or whoever give permission to put two concrete barriers across Beaver Street? Because they keep moving the sign.
Yeah. So we placed, for the residents that aren't in this area, we placed some temporary structures with signage and no trucks. And we, we put some barriers that are movable at this intersection. The truck drivers are now getting out and taking the time to move the barriers. I want to put something there that can't be moved, that they physically will not be able to move it and they will not be able to go around it. And if they do, they would most likely damage their truck. So I want to temporarily, until we find a permanent solution, especially for this intersection of Prospect and Beaver, that we place two large concrete barriers that make it impossible for a truck to get around.
I don't think everybody has a problem with it.
I'm all for it.
Okay. And I think the ordinance, Brendan, I guess we could work on, we could advertise an ordinance to move quickly on this.
That's exactly right.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Hopefully that's going to solve some problems. Chief, what do you think?
I don't know, they'll try to move that too. They'll probably try to move that too.
They're moving the concrete barriers.
It's crazy.
And I think the chief's been putting a police car out there to make it hard to get around too.
Yeah, there's a car out there that actually can't take the right, takes up the, um, space for them.
They already hit the building I own at Central Supply. They hit the overhang. They tried to swing around in there. So. I have one tractor trailer in my driveway on Lafayette Street trying to turn around. He was trying to get to somewhere on Canal Street. So, all right. Greg, I'll start with you.
Yeah. So I want to thank the mayor for his leadership on the train situation. And just reiterate that the train situation that I'm referring to is on Trenton Avenue. I know sometimes when we talk about things that are related to like our specific ward, people might not realize what's going on. But also please know that we are, I mean, we talk about it every day, every week. There are some things that, that just happened in the last couple of years that have elevated the amount of train traffic, for lack of a better word, right there on Trenton Avenue. Namely that if you walk down the path and you look over the tracks on Trenton Avenue, you will see a huge warehouse. And that warehouse is serviced by the rail line. And that's a big part of the reason that a lot of the activity is happening there. We are constantly prodding and pushing, trying to get meetings and meeting with the congressman. And as I said, the mayor's been taking a big leadership role on that. And so we're doing our best and we're going to get something done that can at least hopefully mitigate some of the issues that we, we have there. I also just wanted to reiterate that we do have an ordinance in this borough about feeding furrow cats. It was an issue a number of years ago and we tried to hear all sides of it. And, you know, I think many of us up here are animal people. I definitely am. Totally understand the, the connection that you might make with, with an animal and, and just, you know, feeling like a good person by feeding them. But please take in mind what it might do to your neighbors if you have 30 furrow cats roaming around your house. And so just so you know, if you are actively feeding them and there is a complaint from your neighbor, you will be cited. And, you know, we'll, we'll probably start with warnings and then move on from there and use the letter of the law to stop you from doing it. I, I, it's just not fair to your neighbors when that is happening. So please consider that when you are feeding and caring for any of these furrow cat communities. I just wanted to also mention, mostly in a positive nature, there are obviously a few new businesses in town. One of them being the old, the old Fifth Ward Club. I have heard no complaints about the, the establishment. I've heard it's nothing but great. I heard the food's good. I heard the environment's great. I haven't heard complaints from neighbors about any of the activity that goes on inside and out of there. So I want to commend them for that. And I just ask anyone that lives in that area to do one, just one basic thing. And that is follow the parking signs. That is the only issue that we are routinely having in that area. And that is that people are parking illegally and it is making it difficult for the, the people that live there. Whether it be on paper streets, whether it be on regular streets, whether it be parking in people's driveways. Just please park legally and there will be no issues moving forward. So I'd ask you guys to consider that. I wanted to congratulate Steve Reeves, who is obviously a leader in our fire department. But there was a big article about him in Levittown Now about his actions on a day as a police officer. And he just seemed to, you know, be the guy that we know, completely in control and calm in a very tense situation. I spoke with him, and he doesn't like to be rewarded or commended for just doing his job. But I just wanted to congratulate Steve for being recognized for that because we see the work that he does in our fire department as well. So I'm sure it's very similar to the way he operates as a police officer. And then just lastly, I would just like to touch on rec. Myself, Brian, and Lee are the rec liaisons to the rec board. As you know, especially if you have kids in that age range that would be participating in rec, the program has continued to grow and grow and grow. You know, the rec board is doing a very good job. We've had some spirited conversations with them. We might not always agree, but we certainly recognize the job that they do. And we're going to do our job and, you know, continue to have that program grow and be positive. So we recognize that, and we're looking forward to some of the programs that are coming up in the near future. We have gotten a commitment from the rec board to give a presentation once every quarter. So four times a year, someone from the rec board will come in and let us know exactly what is going on so that we are all on the same page. And I'm finished, but with that, I would just like to commend Councilman Johnson for not just doing his role as a councilman, but also as someone that took on the basketball rec program, which I believe he's going to talk a little bit about tonight. So, thank you.
All right.
All right, as you all know, well, like Craig just said, I take care of the basketball program here for recreation. It started in November, and we started off with skills and drills, like taught all the kids how to dribble, pass, play defense. That went on through from November through December. And then from then, we split the teams up in January, and we started a season. All the kids, like the kids, they all got better. Every kid that was there came out, and they all know the basics of basketball, if not more. And that was our goal through the recreation program with this program, is to teach them the basics and basically teamwork and being a good sportsmanship. And I can say that they all did that. And I would just like to thank all the coaches that came out and volunteered their time. It was Enrique Bridget, Nick, Natalie, Heather, James, Carly, myself, and Steve, and Morgan Cullen. If I missed anyone, I'm sorry. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very happy to have you here and for all you do. I know you like to stay low-key, but you do a lot more than people think in this town. So thank you. Maria?
Well, I want to thank the mayor for the update on the truck situation. And I also want to thank the chief and the police officers for constantly coming out and, you know, trying to take care of that situation. And also heaven from Public Works for putting up all the signs and helping with that as well. And I want to let everyone know that the cleanup is actually going to be April 26 with the rain date of Sunday, the 27th. I believe we will have it again from, I think last year it was nine to two or 10 to two. It's going to be just like last year. So more detail to follow.
Thanks, Maria.
Eddie? No, keep mine short. Just to kind of go back and reiterate what you already said, there's a lot of work that gets done between council and, you know, other parts that we service, the rec board, these, I don't know, that kind of thing. But I really want to take a second to highlight Brian. He does a lot, a lot of work with rec program and making sure basketball is doing what it does, ensuring that the facilities are secured, coaches are there. He does a whole lot. And like you said, Mr. President, he doesn't want any credit for it. But I'm in a position where I can give him his flowers. And I appreciate what you did for, you know, not only selfishly, my sons, my sons, and, you know, what you do, man. You're there. You don't ask for anything, man. You volunteer your time, and give you flowers, man. You did a great job.
Heather, Heather Gilling, I forgot to mention Heather Gilling. She helped a lot as well. Right. Okay, Betty?
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank Brian also. Brian does put all his heart into the rec program. And I know that Greg and Lee also helped with organizing a meeting. So thank you, guys, for making our rec program one of the best, I think. Mr. Dillon, behind on Otter Street, you know how we have the new bridge or the bridge, but then there's Route 13 on the top, Old Route 13, they call it? There's a ton of trash. And not just anybody could go clean it, because I think the way the traffic flies through there, I would hate to see anybody get hurt. But it's from all the wind and everything. There's just a lot of trash in that area. I'd like to see someone get out there and clean it up because it's starting to get really full and bulky. Also, the other day, me and Lee were walking around, and on Green Street, there's a pole where there was a lamp. But I guess with all this weather we've been having, the top part of the lamp is gone. It disappeared. The pole is there, but there's no longer a lamp. And it looks to me and Lee like that's the only lamp left on Green Street that would brighten it up. And with the springtime coming and the kids walking in that area, I'd like to see if we can replace it. I do have a pole number that I can give you. And then we also took a walk at the end of Maple. And me and Amanda have gone, had gone down there. We were talking about them dredging that and cleaning it, and it's dried out. Like, I don't know, are we still working on cleaning that out? Is that for the future, or are we waiting on funding, or what's the plan? Because Mr. Lee's not familiar with it.
Yeah, there is some funding. It's in design and permitting right now. I don't know exactly what section you're referring to, but there is a section.
Yeah, if you go down Maple Street with, you know, Otter Street rec program is, behind there, there's a bunch of trees, and it's like a canal, like, I don't know.
That's the good. Vegetated swale.
Yeah, yeah. It's all dried out, and there's a fence that looks like it's falling in.
Yeah, we're working with PICO on that to try to incorporate that into the MS4 program.
Okay. So if you could just keep us up to date with what's going on there, me and Lee would like to know so we can get back to our constituents. Also, I work for State Rep Tina Davis, and we started, well, we didn't start it, but it's that time of year for, they call it the rent rebate program. It's PA 1000. It's not only for renters, it's also for homeowners. If anybody in Bristol needs help, I know Anna does, and I dropped books off to do the rebates downstairs. But if anyone needs any help, I am more than willing to meet them here, to come by their house. We're located at 3611 Green Lane, and our phone number there is 267-580-2660. You can get anywhere from $380 to $1,000 in July, once we do the rebate. You have to be 18 or older and disabled, or 65. And the income limit is $46,520. But if you're on disability or social security, when we do the rebates, they only count half of that. So if you make $50,000 for the year, then we would only count half of that, so you still qualify. If you have any questions, give us a call out in the office. Like I said, my name is Betty, and I work there also, and I'm more than willing to help anyone. A lot of people don't know about this program. It's a great program. The checks come out in July. And hey, it's a little money in your pocket to help fix your home or whatever you need it for. So please, you know, if you're not sure about it, you can talk to Anna downstairs, or you can get in touch with me, and I'm more than willing to help you. And on that note, tomorrow is his birthday. So I'd like to see everybody wish Ralph a happy birthday on three. One, two, three. Happy birthday! And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. I don't think anybody realizes how much she does, too. I mean, with the rent rebates, I know she goes to people's homes at night. She was there. I called her today for something, and she was helping somebody fill out a rent rebate. So she basically does a lot more. Again, we got a good council here. A lot of people have a specialty in what they do, and it all comes together. And to get to this trash and stuff like that, there's a lot of meetings that take place in this borough during the day. And I know a lot of council can't make it because of jobs or commitments. But we had a pretty heated discussion the other day about Old Route 13 and the trash and the things that are there. I said to the guy, I'd like to pick up all the trash and bring it to your house and dump it on your lawn because it's a gateway coming into town. And we want it to look good. You have railroad ties that have been at a crisscross for 20 years. And they, you know, just like they said, they don't sell anything. We wanted to take the ground, fix it all up, continue the trail. They just, they won't work with you. But, you know, you can't even cite them because they don't care. I mean, we try everything with them, right? They just, they don't want to hear it. They're very arrogant. So I don't know what, how we're going to end this, but we're not going to sit here and have our gateways coming into town look deplorable. So we need to get them fixed up some way, whether our guys do what they can do. But Conrail, Septa, Amtrak. They don't want to hear nothing, just like Green and Garden Street. We're ready to rip the fence down and just start cutting the grass. That was the worst decision that anybody could ever do, is put that fence up. And they never came back to put it on the other side. And the people on that street have to live with it every single day. So, you know, we're trying to figure some things out, but you got to be careful what you do. All right, James, you have anything? Brendan?
Yeah, just two quick items in relation to the mayor's proposed solution to the truck issue at the intersection of Prospect and Beaver. We will have a draft ordinance prepared and ready for advertisement by the next meeting. Second item is, I'll just ask that the borough secretary include in the meeting minutes that council had an executive session in which a number of discussion items on general matters occurred.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One more thing. Thank you for the cleanup. Going back to the president's point, everybody has to do their part, even if, you know, the help seems like it's, you know, not going to be there. But we all just do our part. So the cleanup that you run just about every year is a big, it's a big deal. So thank you.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
I'm not about that. Anybody else have anything?
I just have one announcement that I missed. We're trying to get through for the sake of time. Little League sign-ups are open at bristlesports.org. You go on bristlesports.org to sign up for Bristol Borough Little League. Sign-ups are now open, and opening day will be April 12. I know we have another meeting before that, but please sign up at bristlesports.org, and opening day will be April 12.
And AJ, you have anything? I appreciate you attending the meeting. It's very nice to have you here. Chief, you have anything?
Just one quick thing. On April 26, the borough is going to participate in the National Drug Takeback Day. That's the prescription bills. We will be open here at Borough Hall from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM downstairs. We'll have an officer down there. We'll collect your old or unused prescription drugs. And we are going to have from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM an officer in the lobby at the Grundy Towers across the street for the seniors, so they don't have to walk across the street. They can just drop them there, and then we'll deliver everything to the county building.
That's great.
So I'm letting you know now, because a lot of people say at the last minute, they don't see the advertisement. But the mayor and I will remind you and the town at the next council meeting.
Thank you.
And seniors, it went out of my head. But last Friday, we had our RDA meeting, and I asked the RDA board if they would cut me across the street to the senior center. So I took the entire board across the street to show them how much work is needed in that building. So we're trying to, I don't want to put some numbers out, but I told the RDA, whatever the RDA can fund, the borough council said they would try to match. So we're hoping to really fix that building up across the street. It needs it. And there was a lighting issue on the third floor. I talked to council. They all authorized the manager to approve putting new lights in. It was almost $4,000 to put lights upstairs. They had no lights work, and I said, maybe one light. So we're going to get that building in shape. It just takes a little time to get things done because there's a process involved. I talked to Kurt. You can't circumvent some of these things. It's got to be a bid process, and we got to go through the proper channels. But I'm working with Bob and Gail over there to try to turn this building around. So I'll keep everybody posted.
Thank you.
I know, Betty, you want to get it done, so.
Yeah.
And Lee. All right, so that ends our regular work session. Anybody in the public want to speak on anything? That ends public participation. I'm sorry, Ron, you want to go there?
I'm Ron DeAngelo. I live up on East Circle. The trains, right, even as you put a barrier up, it's going to be a Band-Aid. I mean, that's what it is. There's no cooperation from them. They don't care, like you said. They do what they want. You've asked them plenty of times to take the trains up on the other side. You have to put up with it. You're right there. You're closer than I am. They're eyed on, and when they do go across on the other side of wherever tracks, right, into yard to go into lumbermen, wind blowing this way, fumes. Last week, two, I'll say, eight o'clock in the morning until at least noon time over off of McKinley Street, coming this way, fumes. They don't care. They don't care. They just do what they want numerous, numerous times. We've been up there, video it, listen to the trains, the lollies. Oh, my gosh, poor guy. Right this house. Gary Toasty now. Right this house. Great. Your house. Your daughter's house. I don't know what you could do to resolve that problem. They just don't care.
So we, I agree with you. They don't care, but we have other people involved to make them care, especially Congressman Fitzpatrick's office, who's been phenomenal in assisting us over there. The problem that, you know, a lot of people in town think it's the rail cars, like passenger cars. This has nothing to do, as you're aware, with the rail traffic. It's the boxcars that they're unloading and loading. They consider those off-tracks an actual rail yard, these things. And I'm like, it's not a yard. It's just extra tracks that were there for years. Well, they consider it a yard. And all this work that was being done in Marsville is now being done right on Trenton Avenue, causing this disruption, because this never existed before. So we're not going to do the sound wall unless it's actually going to help with the sound and make a difference, and that's why we need to get the sound study done.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not condemning it. I'm not condemning.
But I'm agreeing with you, because like you said, we don't want to just put a Band-Aid on it. If we have to look into a more permanent solution, which we already talked to Fitzpatrick's office about, like trying to actually build a new yard on the other side of Green Lane or somewhere down the tracks, we're pursuing everything.
They can go right down there on the other side of Green Lane. There's nothing back there.
The problem is crossing the high-speed line to get to the other side of Green Lane. That's their main, that's their biggest hiccup. So it's.
We're coming from there to come to here back and forth.
It used to be like an hour or two in the middle of the night. Now, now they're there by 11:00, 11:30, and they don't leave until 8:00, 8:30 in the morning.
Yes, absolutely.
Yep.
I mean, I've, you know, like, I've been there since '79. You know, it's ground tested to it, but the other neigh- But the other neighbors, you know, we're starting to get a little bit older, right? And it's more annoying now.
Yeah, I mean, the residents on Trenton Avenue.
You can't have your windows open. The poor people can't have, nobody can have their windows up there because when the wind's coming our way, their fumes are coming our way.
I get emails and texts all the time from residents, especially in the summer. Summers, they're saying, I'm sitting outside on my porch, my patio, I smell the fumes. In the winter time, it's the idling and the rumbling and the sounds and the itching because they're there longer because they can't shut the engine off. It's a disaster.
We've had, we were, I guess it was three or four weeks ago now, the congressman himself came, the, he's a very high ranking guy. President of Conrail, who, he's a professional, right? He knows what he's doing. He deals with, knows what he's doing when he's talking to us, is what I mean. And he says a whole lot of things that result to.
Nothing.
Amounts of not much.
Well, I've been, I've been telling the neighbors all up there, right? That you guys are working on it. Congress is working on it. It's just that it's them, not us in the borough. It's them who are running that rail line that don't care.
We can't cite, we literally cannot cite them. It's against the law. We can't even cite a federal entity.
Well, I just, like I said, you know, it's unfortunate. But I know, and I've been telling my neighbors and anybody up in that area, right? That you are working on it.
I will say, I did read something in the reporter that maybe could give us a little hope. And that is that, that the sound barrier, I wondered, you know, how much of an impact it would have. But they were talking about how they can also maybe dig a ditch that would somehow take on the reverberations as well, which might have a bigger impact. I mean, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But that doesn't, if people don't want to hear your work or they want something done.
Yesterday.
I think something's going to happen. It's just, things happen when somebody needs something. You know what I mean? So, all right. Anything else? That ends public participation. Can we go to number two on the regular March 3rd agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the council meeting minutes for February 10th, 2025, to accept the Public Works Report for February of 2025, to accept the Harvard Report for February 24th, 2025, and the Gilmore Report dated March 25th, oh, sorry, March 2025 for February 2025 work.
I have a second. Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for a ninety-one day extension on the waiver of the land development for 2102 Hunter Road, Lumberman, Quonset Hut. Expiration date, 3/12/2025.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the special events forms.
Second by Mr. Cousin, questions or comments?
I, sorry, I do have one question on that. Is there a, is there a size limitation, like the size of the event? I know, I know we kind of lean in on the permitting price and things along those lines. Like, I'm saying, I'm envisioning this being our big events, right? Like Bristol Day or like.
All the Attic's basketballs.
Right. If there's like a smaller type of event, like if someone were to get together at like Mill Street Crossing, for instance, would they be subject to the same permitting fees? Is it?
No, no, it's a range in there.
Okay.
Okay. There were a couple of things still in there that I thought should be really looked at because we had three incidents where people just emptied their grease in the dumpster and it went all over the blacktop.
That's in there.
I know. But there should be, and I wanted to talk to Jeff, maybe Brendan can look at the, look at it also. They're damaging things, like in front of the King George, they spilled all their grease all over the brand new street. Now, I know they're putting up a thousand dollars or whatever the fee is, but sometimes that's not enough. We have to hold people responsible that's running the event, that's the vendor that's out there with the event. So something, I know we're passing this because we got to get this moving. But I think it's something we need to figure out. If you're going to be that stupid and dump five gallon of grease that's going to run all over our blacktop, there's got to be a way to hold you responsible. Yeah, so. Right, AJ, we got to, we got to solve this issue some way.
Yeah, the last, the last Sunday stroll, we had hot coals down one of the inflets.
Right. You're dumping, right.
And that was the one red flag, where everything was a finger box.
So Brendan, maybe look at that again and see if we can. Look, we don't want money from anybody. It's more or less, we want you to put the event on, we want you to have fun, we want the town to come together. But we want to protect the taxpayers. I mean, if you're going to, like he says, dump coals into a storm drain and a fire starts or, you know, just, or a grass fire, they dump it in the grass. So we need to get, I think we got, we're more than halfway there, but we're not a hundred percent there. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Number five.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve cooperation agreement between the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority, excuse me, the Bristol Riverside Theater and Bristol Borough for the administration of the $2 million grant for renovations to the Bristol Riverside Theater.
Second by Mr. Cousin, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That was a major grant that the theater got, $2 million. We're very happy with that. Any other questions before we adjourn?
No.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? By Brian, second by Mrs. Figaro. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.